And we're going to get started. Everyone, good afternoon. I will call to order this hybrid retreat of the Clark County Commission on Aging. It is June 21st, 2023 already, everyone. And my name is Cass Friedland, and I'm Chair of the Commission. But before we begin our wonderful event today, I'd like to share some hybrid meeting reminders. Ken, you had already asked about this in front of us. So these are for folks who might be online and can see us, so we can be in a hybrid mode. You also have these microphones in front of you. There's a little button on the microphone, and so we ask that we keep that muted when you're not speaking. You'll see the light is red when it's muted. And for those who would like to speak, you press on the little push button there and speak, and then press it again to mute. And so the light at the bottom turns green when it is unmuted and red when it's muted. All right? Is everyone comfortable with that? All right. Wonderful. Well, let's move on. First of all, I would like to welcome everyone here today in this wonderful intimate setting for our retreat. We're normally in a very large room with a great deal of separation, so this is just wonderful. A warm welcome to our four new members who are here. And just make a little note that in your packet that you have today, you do have your membership roster that has the information. Please, I know that Jenna and Susan had mentioned, but just take a peek at it, make sure that your information is current and up to date. If there's any changes, please just let Jenna and Susan know, and they can make those changes on there. This retreat is, we're going to be able to do a couple of wonderful things today. First of all, we're going to be able to get to meet one another. Since half of our group is new, we do have some of us sort of old timers who are really looking forward to you meeting one another, your new timers that are here. But also, we're setting the stage for some really exciting work ahead, which is going to guide the work that we do today, much of the work that we do into next year and perhaps in years past that. So first, very quickly today, we're going to be having our agenda review, is that we're going to be doing some work in six different parts. And we are going to have a 15-minute break if we can possibly get our work done in the first part in enough time. But you'll have a break in the middle to be able to use the restroom and the wonderful refreshments that have been brought in for us. So I would love to introduce our facilitator today, Dr. Donna Sinclair, sitting to my left, is a history professor at WSU Vancouver and Western Oregon University. She is a public historian, researcher, and writer, and museum professional who specializes in oral history, Clark County/Washington community history and politics. And Donna lives in Waschuggal, where she has previously served on the Waschuggal School Board and the City's Planning Commission. And we are so happy that this is the fourth time that Donna has agreed to volunteer to facilitate our Aging Commission on Aging Retreat. Thank you so much, Donna. So as we introduce ourselves today, we're going to do something a little bit differently. We ask that you briefly describe your physical characteristics so that all members of our Commission can get to know one another better. So Donna, may I pass it to you?
Thank you. Can everyone hear me okay? Okay. So I'm Donna Sinclair, and I grew up here in Clark County. I'm going to describe myself. I was thinking about this. I am getting toward older. I can no longer quite describe myself as middle-aged. I have long hair, a green dress on, and I'm really excited to be here with you today. This is a wonderful organization. So for those of you who are joining the Commission on Aging, I visit once a year, it seems, and I really am privileged to have the opportunity to hear what's happening in the community and to meet all of you. And Jenna and Susan have outlined, along with, Cass and Franklin have outlined, I think, a pretty interesting day. And we're going to start with interesting introductions. So what we've asked is that you'll provide your name and a description of yourself, why you decided to apply to the Commission on Aging, and then my personal favorite, which is you're invited to speak to a 10th grade class about aging. What would you tell high school students? So your name and description, why you applied to the Commission on Aging, briefly. We have two and a half minutes, just for the record. Everyone has two and a half minutes. My job to try and kind of keep us on track. And then, you know, think about talking to a young person. What would you tell them about aging? And I'm not going to answer the questions because I'm not, do you want me to? Okay, all right, all right. I mean, I can, I can always speak. But we're going to go ahead and start with our existing members. We're going to start with Cass, and then we'll go with the existing members, and then have the new members introduce themselves.
Thank you so much. So I am, again, Cass Friedland. I am 60-plus, white female with very curly white hair, and I'm wearing a black jacket today. I applied to the Commission, it's now going into my third year, because I had moved to Vancouver at that time fairly recently, and really wanted to be engaged in the community. That's the work that I've done for many years. And let's see, I have invited to speak to a 10th grade class since I, since we wrote this question, I should have known this beforehand. I would say that to continue to laugh, to have fun, but also understand that aging is not just a state of mind, but a physical, a physical act. And so you have to really keep active, both your mind and your body, and just engage, engage in the world around you.
Wonderful. Franklin?
My name is Franklin Johnson. I'm the Vice Chair of the Commission. I'm an African-American man with a short, natural Afro. I grew up in the Portland area, worked for most of my career with Department of Agriculture and specifically with the Forest Service. I've done everything from work on a firefighting crew, being a smoke jumper, to later in life when I negotiated all of the agreements for inter-agency collaboration and cooperation, particularly on wildfires. And then I oversaw all of the IT support on wildfires. That's about, that's about it. What I would say to a 10th grader, I would talk a little bit about some of the experiences I had with my grandparents and how I appreciated those and how they influenced me later in life. And so I talked to them about the importance of connecting with, not just your inner circle, but with all kinds of people around you to become, to a point where you have a broader perspective and you have a better understanding of a lot of other people who may not be like you. Thank you.
Thank you, Franklin. And what brought you to the Commission on Aging?
Specifically, I was recruited dragging and screaming by Colonel Smith over there. We had worked on a number of Vancouver City projects. I sat on a couple of selection panels for a fire chief and police chief, and also we worked on the Community Development Block Program together. And I'm glad he did recruit me. Thank you.
I'm glad he did.
Wonderful. Colonel Smith. He was a general.
I'll be 81 years old in October. I live in a retirement community, which is interesting. I live on the east side of town, and my wife passed away 15 months ago with cancer, breast cancer. And I am active. I stay involved. One of the things, as my wife was dying, told me, "Larry, I expect you to be active and stay off the couch. Be active, keep your mind active, and keep your physically active," and so forth. That's wonderful advice. So I do that. Say, "Hi." And stay active as much as you possibly can, and that's just super advice. It helps me out, helps my mind, helps your stress, and people make the world go around. The more people you can meet, I think, it just...
It really makes you, I'm sorry, makes you really feel good about that. I applied for this Commission for a couple reasons. I served on Vancouver City Council for 12 years. I know the community fair and well after 33 years living here. I've been involved in many different activities and so forth, and parks and recreation. I worked a lot with seniors in parks and recreation, Luke Key Center, for example, and providing meals and so forth. And the other thing that's important to me, it's just because of my history, I'm a veteran, 26 years in veteran. I'm a combat veteran. I saw a lot of crap in Vietnam. I haven't forgotten it, and the sacrifices made by veterans going over there and doing their service. And I feel it's important to have that perspective from a veteran on boards and commission. I think it balances things out because we've got about 38,000 veterans that live in Clark County. Young people, you got to include seniors in everything you do. They bring wisdom, perspective, and so forth. And I've told my granddaughter that back, and she's 14, the importance of having seniors as part of the group and so forth, so you can solicit their comments and so forth. I recently returned back in March from a trip to Joyo, Japan, for a sister city relationship that Vancouver has with Joyo. And I was really impressed of how the Japanese treat one another, respect regardless of age, and include seniors in a lot of different activities as part of it. So I think that's important, and that's something to be shared. So often you just, you know, you sort of warehouse seniors, to be quite honest. And I think that's wrong. I think we ought to include them, and they need to be asked. A lot of seniors think, "Well, you know, I'm a little shy, you know, don't want to, I don't want to impose." You got to ask them to be involved. "Would you consider this? And would you be involved in this? Would you, would you make some comments about that?" And I think that's so important. So that's my, that's my comments to high school students.
Thank you. Wonderful advice. Mel, you're next on our list.
Okay, I'm Mel Johnson. I have a full head of silver.
White, oh, thank you. White hair.
We like silver.
Okay, whatever you want to call it. One time, my granddaughter had a white coat. She goes, "Papa, your hair's the same color as my coat," so, yeah, either way. And I'm in my 70s. I have a nice blue shirt with my little flag here. It's patriotic time of the year with Memorial Day and Flag Day and 4th of July coming up. So I hope this is very sacred. I did wildlife management as a career. I was a high school teacher in Orange County, California. So, yeah, had to handle those children. So I know what it's like to deal with 10th graders because I did it a lot for a lot of years. And let's see, I joined this, I saw an article in the paper, and I thought, "Okay." My dad is, he has since passed away, and we had to take care of him. I'm in the senior aging community myself, and I know lots of people that are. I deal with, still with a lot of young people. And so I thought, "Okay, I could probably do some good." I know there were some things in my local community. I live in Yakult, what we call the Bay Area, Battleground, Amboy, and Yakult. And I, some issues we had to deal with over there, and so I thought maybe I could make a difference, and it seems like maybe I am. So that's what I'm working on. If I had anything to say to 10th graders, I used to tell them, you know, "You see all these silver hairs here? I've earned every single one of them. And the greatest time in my life is right now. I go by the adage, 'I don't want to, I don't have to, you can't make me because I'm retired.'" And, "But this is what I want to do, here I am." And this is what I would tell young people, "One day, you'll get to where I am. You'll be able to take naps any time of the day that you want." So anyway, lots of benefits. People open doors for you, they call you sir, you get all the discounts. I love it all. I love being part of the aging community. So anyway, that, this is Mel.
Thank you, Mel. What a wonderful approach. I'm hearing a lot of positive things. And so Dick, you're next on our list. We'd love to hear from you.
Okay, my name is Dick Claremont. It's not Richard. My mother was hung up on D's in her life and thought everyone should be named with a D name, so here I am. I'm 87, pushing 88 pretty hard, and let's see, I have a full head of beautiful curly hair. Is that right?
Yes.
Thank you. And at least that's what my wife tells me all the time.
Definitely.
Sure. So, yes, I worked for the Rock Island Railroad for, in Chicago, for 20 years. Left there and went to the federal agency that regulates railroads called the Federal Railroad Administration. They're part of DOT. And worked there for 28 years. And went from a safety inspector through the various positions to regional administrator here in, starting out in Portland. Our office was there to begin with, and I got it moved to Vancouver early on. And that made everybody who lives in Washington very, very happy, who worked there, of course. I don't know about the railroad people, but they dealt with it well. One of the, one of the reasons I joined, first of all, I've always been involved in community activities, going back, oh my God, yes, into my 20s, from planning commissions to organizations, an organization we started that was called Reach Out that did reach out to people who needed temporary housing and all of those kinds of things many, many, many years ago. So, and that was in the Chicago area. And then I've tried to remain active in the community throughout the time. I spent about 12 years on the Clark County Railroad Advisory Board before I went blind three years ago. And I went blind just from, just as information, went blind from an autoimmune disease called giant cell arthritis. And the, what happens is the cells expand, cut off blood supply, and it cut off blood supply to the optic nerves. So, and so overnight, I went blind, and I am completely blind. I can't see daylight and dark or anything else. So any help in that direction, introducing yourselves or acknowledging who you are to me certainly helps out. And with, with my hearing, I'm not particularly good at voice recognition. I can usually get the girls from the boys, but much beyond that is a struggle sometimes. So the motivation, some of the motivation for applying for this was to get back into community activities and, and planning and what was going on in Yellowstone County. I've served for many years on the board of the Northeast Hazel Dell Neighborhood Association, and that kind of brought me into that very naturally. So, and I have a, I have a nephew, a nephew, good Lord. I have a son-in-law who suggested to me, he saw the, he saw the ad and suggested that I apply, and I did. And, you know, here I am. So I'm really happy to be here, and I hope that I can contribute to this through my own experiences and, well, through those of the family. And, oh, as family, we have five children, that's one male, four females, and 12 grandchildren, and a great-grandchild who's four years old. And we were just talking about the fact that he is, he plans to be ruler of the world, I do believe. Within our family, he meets that goal. So that's it. And if anybody has any questions about any of that, please feel free to ask.
Thank you, Dick. What would you tell that four-year-old when he's a teenager about aging?
I didn't get that, was it?
What would you tell teenagers about aging?
I would tell them that there is, there's a lot of richness in aging. Not, not everyone is a fountain of wisdom, but certainly everyone has had experiences and can share those experiences and results of those experiences, provide guidance. And, you know, early, early on, again, when our, when our kids were little, they joined a library program in the Chicago area that had seniors and children who met once, once a week, and they loved it. And they, they would come home and tell the experiences that these people had talked to them about, about vacations they were planning, or vacations they had had 60 years ago, or, you know, how things were. So that sparked a natural interest, and I, and I still feel that there is a real value in both directions. We've learned as much from our children as they have learned from us.
Thank you. And do you mind saying who you are?
Gail Claremont. I'm the seeing-eye wife, taking place of the seeing-eye daughter. And I'm 84, very old, very fat, very gray, and...
I didn't know that.
Yeah, I know.
Because I lie to them every morning about how beautiful I am, and then I'm five nine. And I'm a retired RN, and still very active in volunteering meals and meals that pass, history clinics and whatnot. So we're pretty involved in attending. And so we can...
Thank you. Thank you for introducing yourself too. Donna, it's your turn, and we're just introducing ourselves and saying who we are, describing ourselves, saying why you joined the Commission on Aging, and then what advice or what would you tell a 10th grader about aging?
Nothing makes you, is a prologue, nothing makes you feel more aged than when one of your grandchildren wants to interview you about what it was like when Mount St. Helens erupted.
Right.
Like, that was just yesterday. What do you mean? I worked primarily in government all my life. I've been a, I'm native Oregonian, been in Clark County since the early 1980s. Love it here, have, you know, like how the community embraces people when they come in, both in Vancouver and the state. I've been on the State Centennial Commission and the Outdoor Commission. I had to hesitate because it's changed its name since I was, was on it. My longest position was for the City of Vancouver in Clark County, Public Information, and established CVTV, hired, hired Paul, who's one of the best.
My boss.
Worked with Larry, obviously, when he was on City Council. Stopped working full-time about nine or 10 years ago, and really been involved with both ends of the care spectrum, young grandchildren who now aren't so young, and my parents, my father's still alive, he's 96, and a veteran. He's in an independent assisted living community out in Beaverton, but just last few months is taking a lot more time. I guess one of the biggest concerns I have is how quickly, not just with older, but younger people too, how quickly people see a number for age and make all sorts of assumptions that may or may not be accurate. And I think the perspectives on aging obviously have changed tremendously with improvements in health and how people can be involved. And I bristle a little bit when some of the younger generations, particularly on Twitter, talk about Boomers in a really negative way, and like, "Hey, if it weren't for a lot of the things the Boomers did, you wouldn't have the benefits you have today, particularly in the workplace." I have long been interested in the activities of the Commission on Aging and have wanted to apply several times, but always just missed the deadline. And then I saw in the Columbia, and I think a few weeks ago, that the deadline had been extended. It was a Friday morning, and like, the deadline's five o'clock today, and I thought, "Okay, I'm going to do it." And so I did, and greatly enjoyed the interview, and really pleased to see the diversity on the committee. That's one of my passions, and an area where I think this community could do a lot better. And to the extent that I can help in any way of the work of the Commission, I want to do that. And I enjoy working with people and meeting new people. And if you see me fiddling with my cell phone, it's because I have quite a hearing deficit, and my phone's coordinated with my hearing aids, and so that's, I'm not texting or ignoring anybody. Trying to get a little bit better. And let's see, what would I tell a young person? It'd just be open, you know, be open to all the possibilities out there. I just often tell people that when I graduated from Willamette, the job I ultimately did with the City of Vancouver and cable television and a lot of public information activities didn't exist. And so if you don't stay open, you potentially miss a lot of opportunities. But also to be open to the experiences that people have had in the past because that history is important. And I guess one of the things I feel very fortunate about, my great-grandmother actually walked the Oregon Trail when she was a little girl, walked all the way from Independence, Missouri to Independence, Oregon. And on the other side of the family, my grandparents immigrated from Scotland. In fact, I love to tell the story that it turned out that my grandfather and my husband's grandfather both came on the same ship to the United States, except my husband's grandfather came a year before and left Ireland, and my grandfather left Scotland, but as I said, it was obviously meant to be because they sort of came together. But, you know, I think it's hard for younger people now because there's so much information and new activities out there to kind of think, "Oh, yeah, there is a lot before that maybe would benefit what we're doing now."
Thank you. Thank you, Donna. Next, we're going to hear from Ken. Welcome to the Commission.
Thank you. I'm Ken Lund, and like Dick, I have flowing, black, ravenish hair, silver length. And so we're probably kindred spirits, if not lovers. Oh, sorry. I don't think you want me to repeat that, though. But I am a 63-year-old white male. I have spent between 35 and 40 years, literally 37 years, in senior living and post-acute as a career. And I've had the incredible opportunity in that to learn perspective and the wisdom that comes from the people that I'm serving. And so when you say, "What would I tell a 10th grader?", it's what I would tell them is probably, learn a deep understanding for four words: wisdom, humility, perspective, and grace. Wisdom, because when you look at an older person, you make an assumption. I make an assumption, we all make an assumption. And if you take the time to sit down with them and let them tell you their story, there's incredible wisdom that you gain from that, and there's also humility that you gain from that. The perspective, one of the things that I think I worry about, and I've tried to encourage my own kids to do and people that I work with, is travel more. I think COVID, in a lot of ways, crippled our, our ability, our willingness to get outside of the box. And I think that's one of the contributors to the narrow-mindedness that we're starting to see a lot in... to see a lot in our communities. And at least my experience, the more I traveled internationally, the less I realized I knew. And so, again, there's some humility in that. And hopefully, if you've gained wisdom, you've gained humility, you've gained perspective, your application of that, you'll find grace. So I didn't answer why the Commission. And I moved to Vancouver seven years ago. I'd always been actively involved professionally, from a professional's perspective in this industry, if you will. But for whatever reason, when I moved to Vancouver, all of those connections that I had around the country, other than from poor work, kind of just fell away. And so I read the plan, I spoke through the interviewing process, and I just am very, very excited about the opportunity to contribute to something this meaningful in our community.
Thank you, Ken. And again, welcome.
Thank you.
Justin, we'd like to hear from you. You're welcome.
Hi, my name's Justin Ross. I am a 48-year-old mixed race. I'm half-black, half-white. I'm wearing a, I'm six foot two, I weigh about 300 pounds. I've got a black t-shirt and a black hat that I wear every single day, because that's my company attire. So my background in general, I was a Navy hospital corpsman for six years, a military veteran as well, more of the Iraq War combatant. Since then, I've worked in real estate. I own a construction company locally. For about 15 years that we do residential remodel, it's a lot of agent in place. I'm a certified agent in place specialist, so a lot of my time over the past 15 years has been direct interface with our local community, making modifications of their homes, consulting them on how they can stay in their homes longer. My wife and I also recently acquired a company in town called Northwood Health and Safety that some of you may have been familiar with. And we do durable medical equipment, hospital beds, rollers, wheelchairs, all that kind of stuff. So in the process of running these companies, my awareness of the need in our community for help for the senior population, and maybe a growing awareness of the younger generations to understand what we're actually facing coming up as we, you know, we know that this population is growing, and the percentages of our population being 60 and older in the next seven or eight years is pretty stunning, if you really think about it. And the fact that we're already under staff, we don't have resources already to fit the demand is concerning. So those are some of the driving factors of why I wanted to be on the Commission, to see if I could help offer some insight from, and try to tie in some of the younger generations, into taking an interest into this, because it's going to take everybody to be successful at all this. We're going to make an impact and make a difference. And I think that ties into what I would tell a sophomore at high school, or, you know, 10th grader. I would tell them that they should maybe consider their future career path to be somewhere in healthcare, or something that supports some of these things that we're going to be talking about here. And, you know, and also, I would tell them to, you know, instead of spending an hour this afternoon on Instagram, go out on the street and find the elderly person that's on your block that's lonely, that doesn't have anybody to talk to, and, you know, spend an hour of your time listening to what they have to say, and maybe sharing some of your life with them as well. Because I think that would have a very great impact if we would just kind of try to roll back the clock a little bit and have more of that face-to-face social time. That's one of the things that I hear most commonly from clients of mine, is that they're lonely. And the fact that we live in a country of 330 million people, and we have an epidemic of loneliness is ridiculous. So I think we can solve that quite easily if we try. That's my...
I think you did. Thank you, Justin. That was a beautiful sentiment in terms of the crossover. So I'm going to turn it back over to Cass and Franklin for a moment, and we're moving into an activity next.
Yes.
I'm Donna.
Yes, very exciting. Thank you so much, all. And it's wonderful to meet and also be reintroduced to everyone on the Commission. Within a year's time, a lot does happen. So we have been on a journey this past year, year and a half, working with community members, working with community organizations, to refresh our original Aging Readiness Plan. We have sort of the large graphic behind that mentions all of the different chapters and areas within it. The document, the Aging Readiness Plan, is really our roadmap for the Commission to advance the work in really working on behalf of the aging residents of Clark County. So everyone here brings extraordinary experience and perspective to the Commission. And during our brainstorming exercises, these personal perspectives will begin to broaden as other community needs might be introduced that are new, perhaps to you, adding complexity but also excitement to our discussions. And we really can't wait to learn from one another as we map out the priorities that effectively serve our entire community. And Franklin?
One of the big changes that we have going forward is that when it was originally created, the Aging Readiness Plan only had five chapters. And as a result of our experiences with COVID over the last several years, we've added a sixth chapter on emergency preparedness. And this has been kind of a personal area of interest for me. Early on, I had experiences working in communities, fighting fires, and trying to get citizens to evacuate, or trying to communicate with people in an area that there was an imminent danger and that they needed to evacuate, or take whatever specific measures. And I've witnessed loss of life from people that I work with, as well as people I was friends with. And so the kinds of issues that develop when we have an emergency issue, the police or the fire department are going to be tied up with that. So an individual citizen is going to be pretty much on their own for the first several days, maybe a week or more, until that, whatever that emergency is, is under some kind of control. So this chapter has been both a personal interest, but I think it's something that could be very valuable to the aging community going forward. There was quite a few issues for just finding out where you could go and get a vaccination. And people struggled quite a bit with getting online, they didn't have that kind of expertise or technology. They get online, and by the time they get online, all the appointments were closed and so forth. So there's a lot of opportunities, I think, to try and look at strategies that will better prepare our community in the event that there is another, hopefully not a pandemic, but whatever large-scale emergency befalls us, that our community will be better prepared to survive it and thrive through it.
Okay. Well, that's great. I didn't realize that sixth area had been added. So what we're going to do now is actually launch into the activity part of things. And each of you has a couple of Post-it notes next to you on the green paper. And what we would like you to do is to identify the topic area that you see the most community need for, the top two topic areas that you see the most community need for, and why. And so I'm just going to review, just so that we have this audibly. We have housing, community engagement, emergency preparedness, healthy communities, transportation, education awareness, and advocacy. And I know you're all familiar with the plan. But if you'd write down which two areas that you think are the most important and why, then we'll post them up here on this sheet on the wall. Okay? So you can take a few moments. One on each, yes. One on each piece of paper. Didn't explain that exactly. Yes.
Which one and why?
Which one and why on each Post-it note. And then we'll post them up here. Maybe put your name at the top of each Post-it note also. Thank you. Just take your time. That's what this is for. If I can't read it, I'll ask you. Okay. How are we doing? Thank you, Franklin. Okay. We're not quite there yet. Thank you, Justin. We're almost there. They're fine. I'll get it for you, Donna. Okay, everyone has completed this. Franklin, did you want to take a moment to say a few things?
Yes, just very briefly. I just wanted to acknowledge that there's been a lot of work that was done in preparation for this retreat. And I think we need to just take a moment to introduce the two critical staff people that, without whom, we would not be able to get anything done. So Jenna and Susan, would you take your turns, please?
Thank you, Franklin. I think everyone, we've introduced ourselves to everyone either through the new member orientation, but again, I'm Jenna K. I am a land use planner for Clark County Community Planning, and I'm one of the staff members who provides support to this group.
And I'm Susan Ellinger, and I'm a land use planner, and I also help and really enjoy working with the Commission on Aging.
Can I ask you, well, how long have you been with the county?
I've been with the county for 25 years, just in May.
And I've been with the county for almost six years.
Well, I just want to echo how much I appreciate how efficient both of you are, and the solid planning that goes into this, so that we can have a meeting that's productive. Since I've done this for four years, I've watched it, and I still get Jenna's emails regularly in between, so I really appreciate it. So what we're going to do is to look at what we have here and kind of identify the patterns. But I'll start by reading through what we see. And I'm going to go from the fewest Post-it notes to the most Post-it notes, so that... So the first one, there's one on transportation, which is interesting, because I know in past years, transportation was a focus. So that sort of reflects where we're at socially. So Mel noted that transportation for elderly folk need to get around, and to avoid loneliness, and to acquire necessities of life, right? So transportation. The second one that has one Post-it note is healthy communities. Healthy communities, healthfulness is at the core of happiness. Oh, you're also poetic, also. The next one, so that was transportation, healthy communities, community engagement. Franklin noted in terms of community engagement, which has three Post-it notes, the vehicle to inform aging communities of services and strategies and opportunities. So community engagement is key. You could probably connect that to education, right? And then Ken notes that community engagement is important because of the isolation and loneliness, and nutrition, right, are significant driving forces in the decline of seniors. It manifests itself in medical and health issues. Okay, so to avoid isolation and loneliness, and to make sure that people are healthy physically and in their minds, something you all brought up. Justin notes in relation to community engagement that it's going to take all capable members of our community to implement working solutions to problems that are directly related to our rapidly aging population. My rapidly aging eyes make this. Go a little slower, in case you're wondering about my hesitation. Okay, so there were three notes there. Let's see. The next is emergency preparedness. So I think that's such an interesting and important addition. That reflects the moment that we're in. So emergency preparedness, I'm not sure whose this is, somehow we didn't get the name, but growing senior population, services and care, and caregivers for emergency preparedness. Dick noted that there's very little knowledge and a lack of information regarding resources when it comes to emergency preparedness. Franklin says allowing aging communities to avoid disconnects in vital services and serving the impacts of an emergency.
Surviving.
Surviving, sorry, not serving. We don't want to, we don't want to serve those impacts, we want to survive them. Okay. Cass said, we found so many gaps in connection to services during COVID. Hopefully, the ARP can help connect dots in services and resources. So critical. And then Donna mentioned that because we're behind, pandemic showed areas of need, and seniors may need more support, they don't have a plan or help to plan. Okay, so that was the emergency preparedness. And now, the one with the most Post-it notes, there's six of them, is housing. So Donna mentioned cost slash availability, more older population need, need support, no longer living independently, and that ties into health and transportation. Of course, all of these things are integrated, right? Ken said the why is locally, nationally, we lack an advantage about future understanding...
I'm amazed you...
We lack an understanding about future... We lack an understanding about future demand and functionality. Okay. Affordable and accessible housing is in significant shortage with no plan or place to solve it, says Justin. Cass notes that the costs of housing are pricing aging adults out of the market. We need accessibility, affordable housing for seniors in Clark County. This one, I'm not sure who this was, somehow a couple of them didn't get the names. The cost of housing, so we have cost repeatedly, this is one of the things that comes up. And the type of care, retirement community or centers, availability and location. Dick says housing regarding rent, so costs again, pushing people out onto the street. Difficult for young people to get a start. Okay, so I'm just going to make a note that transportation, we have an issue, but I'm going to ask you, I'm going to ask you to look at, I'm not sure, do you want to talk about emergency preparedness or housing first? Because these are the two big buckets. What do you all think?
Housing.
Housing. Thank you. Thank you, Justin. Okay. Let's see. So I'm just going to make a note for healthy communities. And then housing, what we saw were that we have cost, right? I'd say accessibility.
Accessibility and availability.
And availability, right. Okay. What else? What else did you hear?
For housing.
I'm sorry, what? For housing.
Taxes.
For housing.
Okay. You're thinking about how to address some of this, right? Okay.
So my issue about demand functionality was, I'm not sure that we had very thoughtful questions, for lack of a better term, about what happens when somebody outruns their resources. Oh, sorry. What happens when somebody outruns their resources? And if the average savings for somebody that's 60-plus is a quarter of a million dollars or less than it is, that's basically five years. And what do you do for the next 20 years if they live to be 80, 85? Because not only do taxes become an issue and escalating rents become an issue, but just survivability.
Okay, so survivability over time, which I think somebody said surviving over time. Okay, what else? What else do you all think is important here?
Traditionally, the assumption is when...
Oh, I'm sorry. I, of all people, should know that. I think traditionally, what's happened is when someone has trouble, particularly if they're alone, but couples do, that they have their home, they own their home, but they've run into whatever kinds of issue. And so, okay, you need to move to assisted living or with a family member or something, but increasingly, communities, particularly in Europe, are looking at alternatives to that that are not as expensive even as moving someplace else or as stressful as moving, whether it's the whole idea of, it's not a name, where houses are around an open area and it's sort of community and it's got a name. Or in Europe where college, there's more college students rooming with people but also providing support, you know, that it doesn't just have to be an either or, that there are creative options that might serve the needs of a lot of these people.
So I wrote down lack of alternative slash support systems related to housing. So we have cost, right? Issues of access and we don't have a good system in place and we recognize that. So of course, you all are here to help figure out what to do about that. Mel, did you want to say something?
Yeah, Ken used the word functionality of a home, of housing. I mean, do you have the type of bathroom that, or shower that aging folks need? In this day of rising temperatures, do you have the air conditioning that you need? Are you able to get in your home easily enough as you get older? So I think functionality is a very important thing to consider when we think about housing.
Okay, so I wrote functionality and infrastructure, right? Franklin.
Excuse me. Find a way to motivate changing the paradigm because right now, it's all focused around money. And the point that you made, Ken, about what does an aging citizen do when they don't have the resources to sustain them through an extended period of life or retirement? If they can't pay their taxes sometimes, just that, just that the dollars for taxes could be the difference between somebody staying in their home, you know? So we've got to look at a way to have a different kind of infrastructure that supports our aging community so that they're not living on the streets.
Okay. So let's, because we're actually getting, we're heading toward the end of our half hour and we've only addressed one item, but I do want to, and we're going to have more time to talk, so let's kind of keep these things in mind. We had the emergency preparedness and part of what we're going to do is just kind of synthesize what is it that we see here? So I think, I think it became very clear in the pandemic that we didn't have good communication systems. That's part of what we're seeing here. Little knowledge and lack of information regarding resources, right? That there was a lot of disconnection in the vital services that people needed and people didn't know how to access. I think that vaccination example is ideal. I actually helped people who are my older friends online find appointments, but there was no matching people up, like you said, Justin, of younger people and older people. So preparedness is something that is really clearly important. So we're going to talk about change in just a moment and how to kind of get into that. Is there anything anybody wants to say about how we might characterize this?
May I broaden your preparedness to the lack of a legacy system? Which is what we don't want to do with the next, it seems to me is what we don't want to do with the next pandemic because there's going to be another pandemic or something significant, whatever the emergency is. If we constantly recreate the wheel with having to react versus having legacy systems for communications, then we're not really solving anything.
Okay, so a legacy system where we're learning from those events, is that what you're saying?
We're learning from those events, but there's also a way to have an ongoing touch point. So when that emergency happens, I don't have to think about it. I know which website or which phone number or which kiosk or whatever, I know what to do.
Like Clark County PUD.
Yeah, there's something else that, and just where we live, with the river in Portland and so forth, and we have some difficulty when you have 60,000 folks that are working over in Portland and many of them have senior parents that are on this side. I'll give you an example. My son-in-law works for TriMet. Many of the TriMet drivers that live in this side, in the back of their cars carry rafts so they can blow them up if something happens, they can get across the river back to their families. And many of their families are the moms and dads. I mean, that's the reality that we live in. And they're scared to death because we live in this type of environment and especially with the bridge and all that is going to be worked on, it just amplifies that. How do you get back and how do you get these loved ones back and tied in that they're taking care of their parents? And it's an issue. And it's no way to solve and it's being solved by individuals themselves of looking at innovative ways to get across the river in case we have an earthquake or something happens so they can get home to take care of their senior parents while they're out. So it's a broader issue and it just amplifies because we got that river and we got two cities and we've got, and some differences between both cities.
On the same subject, we were caught in 84, in the state of Florida, when the tank car blew up over there on the Union Pacific in the fire. And what we found was that there was no traffic moving and, you know, people, in a crisis, many people would jump in their car and try to go someplace. And, you know, that's not going to happen. I mean, they're not going to go anyplace. It's just stopped dead. And those kinds of things seem to be public and the public gets notified of many, many things considering emergency response, but then it seems to fade after that. So the thing of the having something there that you can go to and you know it's there and it has what you need would be a real plus.
Okay. I've noted the traffic, the two sides of the river, but ongoing, that ongoing touch point idea as kind of a keynote. Franklin.
Thank you. Looking at this big picture, we talk about financial issues that senior citizens have and all of these other areas, they may just be barely making it. And then an emergency like a pandemic comes and it could throw them into homelessness or any other challenges that there's no easy way to get out of. And so that's one of the things that I think we've got to really look at is putting people in a position so that when and if an emergency comes, it isn't catastrophic to their lifestyle.
And it doesn't even have, it doesn't even have to be a pandemic-sized event. You know, if you listen to the news in Chicago or Florida or these cities that have extreme heat during the summer, we've had more of that the last few years, but just from those heat waves that may only last a few days, people are dying from those.
Right. Donna? Couple of quick things. One is the prolonged emergency like the pandemic, but we also have to remember that we're very susceptible to earthquake or even without that, snowstorms that somehow just bring us to total catastrophe. And the problem is we assume that people can follow Twitter, Facebook, if you have electricity, television, and even though it's a decreasing number of the population, there's still a significant number of the population who doesn't have access to or doesn't use computers or anything but a landline. And that was part of the problem with the pandemic is, you know, older people weren't using those tools. So it's almost like, and this is sort of a game of dissolution, but it's almost like you need to have like the community watch program where, you know, in advance and make sure that there's a neighbor or family member that's going to follow up with that person. The other thing that the pandemic highlighted, and I know people are still having trouble with and it's a result of the pandemic and it's not emergency per se, but the whole way accessing the medical system now is give us, do the screaming memes. And for older people in particular, and I know my father who's still cognizant and sharp and all that, it's just hard to access that system because of staffing shortages, they've got to phone trees and, again, assuming using portals. And there comes a point, even if older people have access, it becomes too much for them to navigate. And so, again, that's not emergency, emergency, but it's related and an aftereffect that the pandemic really highlights.
Right. Do you want to talk about next steps now or do, okay.
Yeah, maybe I'll jump in. Should I?
You're going to continue this.
Yeah, yeah. And this is fantastic conversation, everyone, very exciting. Franklin, I'll jump on in and then we can, okay. So the, sort of, the ideas here, some of the things that I see as bubbling up in this conversation too are how we as a society tend to really think in silos. So we think of housing, you know, and even our aging readiness plan. We think in silos and we try to address problems sometimes in those silos, but in fact, as folks have mentioned over and over again, everything is interconnected, right? So thinking about our plan, the emergency, the aging readiness plan has all of these different connections between the different chapters or between the different areas. So that's something that we as a group can continue to explore and tease those different connections so that we're, you know, we don't find ourselves even communicating this information in the, sort of, these large silos. So thinking about how to cross-reference these things and so, and thinking about those legacy systems, learning from these different ideas and of course, how to communicate this out to everyone because that's what we've heard over and over again, that was our last year's theme, was thinking about innovation, innovative ways to connect people who might not use the internet. Organizations who are relying on certain ways of communicating, how do they reach people in the community? So I think what we're going to be doing in this next step then is we're going to be taking this feedback from today. We're going to be talking with Jenna and Susan about this and laying this over, over time with everyone, thinking about our new aging readiness plan, which we're going to hear about in next month, right? We're going to have the presentation on our new aging readiness plan. So we can, again, continue and deepen this discussion as we move forward.
I just noted some of the things that were up there. And, okay. Do you want to follow up on Franklin?
Yeah, just very, very quickly. I'm really appreciative and impressed with the kind of comments that are being made. And I think one of the things that we have to consider at some point down the road is a comment that you made, Justin, about talking to people about going into healthcare, geriatric care and other related fields that can serve and support, you know, seniors.
That makes a lot of sense. So the next, the next section that we're going to be talking about is change. So we just identified some of the problems, some of the problems. We know that if you look across these categories, you have things like isolation, communication, these sort of broad areas that need to be addressed. So what does, what does change mean to you and how might we do it? We're going to sort of talk generally about that and then you have little stickers, yes, everybody has stickers, I don't have the stickers. So there are stickers that are next to you with a list of items up here of things that we're wondering what you're interested in participating in and prioritizing. But before we do that, let's just talk a little bit about what could change look like?
So I think what we were thinking about with this topic in this part is that many times people join commissions to bring about change, right? And the change can be large changes like perhaps in presenting, you know, convincing people to present different bills or finding ways to change entire systems. But the change, also some people think change can be something very small. It could be that you're, 100 new people learn about a new service, right? That could change their life in that way. So what we wanted to really explore here is the expectations coming into the commission to kind of hear what everybody thinks about. to kind of hear what everybody thinks about, when we think about driving change, which is one of the things that we do talk about, both in our, you know, our mission and in all of our conversation. What could a reasonable change, what would make you feel as if you've seen a change? You've driven change based upon your work on the commission? And it could be big, and it can be small scale. So just a general sense of what does change in our work mean to you for folks in the aging community in Clark County?
One of the things that's really going to test our creativity is the commission is basically in an advisory role. So we don't have the power and authority to make new laws or legislation. And so we've got to be very creative about how we can influence the people that do have that kind of responsibility to influence change. One of the things that I thought was really, really interesting, I was, years ago, I was in the fire department, Vancouver Fire Department Citizens Academy, and I thought I knew what a fire department did. But you spend a day going through orientation of all the different departments, what they do and so forth, and then you get split up and you get, each gets sent to a fire station to do an overnight ride-along. And what I found out is that all of the calls that we went on were medical calls. And often, as we were going to a particular call, they would be describing by name the people that they were going to deal with and what the situation was, because they had been to that particular home a number of times. And so I looked at how that was impacting the fire department. And so we had a subsequent team that was put together to look at how they deploy the resources. So they came up with the idea of, instead of sending a truck and a crew out, they're going to have a couple of SUVs that were manned by EMTs to go out on those particular calls and spare the heavy equipment for, you know, more urgent calls. And so that was a relatively seemingly simple thing, but it took time to really understand how they operated, and then to go back and talk about, is there a more efficient and effective way to meet that need? And so sometimes we may not know what the change is going to look like, but it may be a function of bringing together the parties that are responsible for a particular service or function, and seeing how they can collaborate to deliver it more effectively or whatever, and at a cheaper rate. So we're going to have to understand that we may not know going into it what the change is going to be, but if we can facilitate the collaboration that can bring about that change, then, you know, we've met our goal.
This is Jenna. I wanted to know if it would be helpful, there's a, we're going to do an activity with a big poster on the board. There is also a sheet in your packet that if you pull it apart, is a version of that table. I'm wondering, would it be helpful to review some things on that list to help sort of expand on what Franklin was talking about and give some examples of what the commission's done in the past, and then have the conversation about what does change look like? Would that be helpful?
Sure. I mean, that's actually what I was thinking. The next step would be to back up to, I think, based on the conversation that we just had, we could say that like positive change would look like housing for all seniors that is, meets their needs and is affordable, right? So that's change that we want, we know that. Emergency preparedness systems that are easy to use and provide the guidance that people need, so we know that. So to address what Jenna just said, what the Commission on Aging has done in the past, there's a whole list here, so I'm going to go over a couple of those things. And they're calling it a COA Toolbox for Change. So the question is, what kinds of things might you be interested in, most interested in, participating in or seeing happen? And so the first one is, excuse me, speaker series, fireside chat, guest interviews, discussions, presentations. So they've invited people in to inform the commission about different topic areas to figure out strategies to move forward. So experts, right? The second is updates from implementing partners during monthly meetings, so city and county staff, community service providers, and so forth. Number three, subcommittee work for specific projects or tasks with updates and recommendations brought back to the full Commission on Aging. So subcommittees who, you know, you go off and you're doing some work. Leadership summit of decision-makers described for commitment to spurring change. I think you did something like that with the transportation summit. Creating educational materials, for example, the Universal Green Design booklet. Presentations to county and city councils or city groups, or community groups, where members of the commission are going out and actually educating other people about the needs, right? Letters of support, number seven. Number eight, requesting county and city councils to move certain ARP ordinance code or planning strategies forward. So encouragement, right? Testifying at county and city council hearings on projects, moving the ARP strategies forward. So if these are things that resonate for you, these are the kinds of things you'd put your little sticker next to. Sharing information in newspapers via news releases or interviews with reporters. I heard someone here say they're in the Neighborhood Association. So Neighborhood Association newsletters to educate others, CVTV and other media. County and city proclamations for number 11. Awards, the Silver Citizen Award that draws attention. Finding, number 13, finding and applying for grants to help implement an ARP strategy. So ARP has some small grant programs. 14, this is a lot, right? Nobody can do all of these things, which is why you have four stickers and things that you're most interested in, and then they can be prioritized. So developing and implementing an age-friendly certification program for age-friendly businesses, universally-designed homes. Number 15, Clark County Age Friendly Contest. So photo, poster, storytelling. I'd suggest an oral history project, that's my area. Hosting a pitch night or other crowdsourcing event. It's kind of like the housing event that was at the library years ago. I don't know, I don't think it was the commission, but where community members came in and actually provided ideas, I think on Post-it notes, about things that they thought were important, and then there was a report produced, so that leaders could actually follow up. So that's, those are the 16 things that are here. That's a lot, and you may have other ideas, so there will be a brainstorming session too. But I guess with that, yes, Mel?
You very briefly said letters of support. To me, that may be the most effective tool that we have. Can you explain what you envision letters of support to be?
Letters of support for different initiatives? Is this, I didn't prepare the list, but I would, I would think it would be either initiating letters of support from community lead, leaders would be one way to do that. There's letters, letters to the editor would even be another, for supporting certain kinds of initiatives, or for educational purposes, or op-eds. I don't know. What are you thinking, Jenna? I'm assuming you've got that into...
Right. When we, when we put it on the list, we were, I think initially thinking about how, so the commission has a, developed a letter of support policy. So if there is a group in the community that is looking for support, and the Commission on Aging may be, help them with their cause, they can ask the Commission on Aging to provide a letter of support to them. And so the commission has an outline process on how you submit your request, and then the commission has a process to decide as a group, do we want to write this letter of support for this group that requested it? So that's what we were initially thinking of, but I, I think what you were just saying, the commission also as a group could decide, we would like to write a letter of support on X because it's in line with our Aging Readiness Plan, and we think that's going to help move a strategy forward. So you all could initiate that on your own as well, so you have both the tools to support outside groups or to sort of write and, you know...
But the way you wrote this was a committee endorsement as opposed to a grassroots campaign or initiative.
Sure, but I, but I think, again, this is just a brainstorm list, so take it, take it where you want.
I made that as a statement rather than a question.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But, but again, there's a lot of, this is a, take this as a very draft list of things the commission has done or could do, you know, you are not wedded to any of that. So just to help start some thinking.
Are there any other areas that you'd like to be clarified in terms of what they mean? It's a long list. That's what I think, as I was reading it, I was thinking, I'm going on for a long time.
I think being new to this, I mean, of course, you come into this and you're wondering, you know, of course, we're signing up because we want to see change, because we want to help with change. Also curious to kind of know what changes have been successful so far. I mean, you guys have been in place for 12 years. What's been accomplished? What things has the commission presented that were actually embraced and put into action and are actually serving the community currently? I'd be interested to see how those came about, how that process worked, and where your stick points were, or where the challenges were at, because some of the, you know, what's happened in the past can help give insight into how things may be able to be navigated going forward. We're talking about, you know, wrestling a monster. If you really consider and look at this, and the way we've mentioned, it's broken into these other categories, but clearly they all tie together. And you can't really fix one without touching on the next one or the next one, you know? And everyone's here for the right reasons, and what we're trying to do is very, very important to the members of the community. As you know, you wouldn't be here if it wasn't. And a lot of you have already lived these things and experienced these in your own lives. I would say most people in the community also have. They've got parents or grandparents, and almost everybody has a story of the scenario they went through, when somebody was aging in place or had mobility issues, or whatever it might be on this list of things we're talking about. So being clear and focused on what angle we're going to take, and to set clear goals to accomplish, and not think we're going to be able to solve it all overnight, but if we're going to actually make change, then let's be definitive about what change we're trying to drive, maybe try to choose a few topics or a few things, and really, once we make one and the community sees that, maybe we'll generate more support every year after year after year, because we're going to have to engage a lot of other people. We're not just going to be able to do it by ourselves. We're the leadership, from that perspective, so, I don't know. That's kind of where I'm seeing this as. And I can see a number of things on there. My initial, personally, is to go, okay, well, everything that says to get people that are decision-makers and can implement things, we want to be in front of them. Because that's how things are going to change, you know? Engaging the community, getting their support, getting letters. When we say letters, letters of support from maybe local organizations that would be helpful and to support the mission and the idea of what we're trying to solve. And a lot of those organizations may be able to provide financial resource to help with some of those things, because it's not going to happen for free. But there are a lot of large entities, private entities, banks, builders, things out there in the community that generate a lot of revenue, that have to donate money to things, so. I think that the support of that is paramount as well. So I'll go off my soapbox.
No, oh, great.
Thank you for that comment, Justin. One of the things to keep in mind is, as you look at these things that have been done in the past, we have the opportunity to recast them going forward if we need to see how they would fit into whatever we decide our current initiatives are going to be going forward.
And that's part of the goal, right, Jenna?
Yeah. If it's helpful, I can try to do a brief summary of history of the group and where they've sort of spent their time. Would that be helpful?
...for their time.
Or what's been effect, what's created change? Yeah, so there are examples where either the county or city council has changed something because of this commission. There's been some code changes, you know, there's a lot of code changes that have been recommended that haven't been done, but there are examples of code changes related to housing and transportation in particular that are direct results of this group. So that's one, one thing. So it took the group doing a lot of learning and then making those recommendations to the decision-makers, you know, so there were a few steps to get, to be able to make the pitch and for a decision-maker to say, let's move this forward, right? So I think that's been one area of change that's happened. I also think the group has done quite a bit of education. So there's been a lot of bringing in guest speakers to learn, both for the commission, but then also like using your meetings as a speaker series, essentially. So there's been awareness and education, but it's, but it's been hard to pinpoint what's the change from that, right? It hasn't been something necessarily as concrete as, oh, this law changed. So I think that's been where a lot of other time has been spent. And again, there's a lot to go into. I also think there's a few key resources the group has made historically that we still distribute. You know, we get calls all the time, you know, can I get a stack of those universally-designed booklets? So I think that's another more concrete example of, it's a resource, we have it, could we do a better job with more people knowing about it? Absolutely. But it is something, you know, that's a tangible thing we can grasp, so.
Yeah, I think, and to your point, Justin, that, you know, we have, we have, we're at a really wonderful moment, an interesting moment. We are, as a commission, we were locked in COVID. Communication extremely limited to the work we were doing. We didn't do an enormous amount of community outreach. And there are frankly, many, 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 many people in the community that don't even know that there's a Commission on Aging, right? So we have that identity that, that we are discussing and thinking about who, we know who we are, but others don't know who we are. So how do we get that out, right? Then we also have our identity as sort of a convener, connector, facilitator, where we have special relationships, like with the Area Agency on Aging and Disability of Southwest Washington. See, AdSwa, I always say AdSwa, but, right? So we have those special relationships, and, and for instance, AdSwa. There's many people in the community that don't even know that this amazing resource even exists. So they've actually reached out to us, which we're going to be talking about at a later time, about how we can partner to really communicate to people that they exist, right? So we have our own identity, and then we have community organizations, part of this emergency preparedness, you know, part of threads and many other ways, that have not been able to reach a broad segment of the population. So when, when you do bring up this point, which is so interesting about having a, being able to have, have these goals or understand what that change is, we also, I think, need to understand that we as a body, how we want that information about who we are to go out, but also through letters of support, actually have meaning when we write a letter of support, so that people know who we are and the work that we do, and we in turn understand where all these connections are, so that we can better communicate those connections to others, right? So it's, it's all those layers, right? All that, that complex stuff. So when we're talking about what does change mean to us, or where do we want to place our dots, and where do we want those few goals to be, I think that's going to be a really great place to start. It's going to help us narrow down and focus on a few things, even though there's a million things. It'll help us focus on those few things where we can really build our identity and communication strategies around that.
You know, let me add something. The challenge we all have is the society we live in. It's an open society, it's democratic. When you talk about different agencies, remember, they have boards too, with personalities and on boards and difference and so forth. So it's a, if it goes to a particular nonprofit, we're asking for support, that nonprofit's got to reach down into the board and get a buy off the board, do you like what commission on aging is coming up? And there may be a sales job that has to take place within that particular board, depending on what kind of services they are at. And we have services that, to be quite honest with you, I think, overlap and duplicate one another. That's just the nature of the beast, I think. And when that happens, you have turf issues that come up as well. How is this going to hurt us, or it'd hurt us if they make this type of change? And so you have all those complications. So it's a communications process, but it's a sales job of working with those key individuals that can make things happen in a particular agency and so forth. And we, as I said, we have a lot... And we, as I said, we have a lot of great agencies around here, but they all have their different personalities and they have their different focuses and where they want things to go. So it's a challenge.
Just one small example that's not as formal as changing laws or policies. In some of our fireside chats during COVID, we had some of the service providers for the community come in, like Meals on Wheels and stuff, and they talked about some of the pivots that they had to make and how they had to change their operations as a result of the COVID restrictions. And so just that process of sharing that mentality of, okay, we've got to shift and then sharing it among different service providing entities to get them thinking about, okay, we survived this, what do we need to think about changing if that happens again? So while that's very informal, that was one of the things that brought about some change to say, okay, we're not just going to operate, but we're going to start thinking about what our plan is going to look like if this happens again or if we're curtailed in some way of delivering those services. So those kind of things take place sometimes even on a more informal basis.
So I'm hearing that the Commission on Aging does connecting across services and public education. That's, I mean, that's my observation in coming here once a year for four years and kind of hearing the discussions, but that that's part of what you do. And then I was also thinking, I know that you also present to the county council, right? Once a year. I don't know if all of you who are new know that, but you present to the county council with your plan and that's an opportunity to ask for what you need if you're cohesive about determining that. Again, I'm an outsider, I just have observations, so.
And for our annual report, certainly, we do have a pretty comprehensive annual report that we also produce for distribution. And then the conversations to the different city and county council come out of that work.
So it's very informational and educational and cross, across the county, trying to be a connector. I think somebody used the word convening, connecting, that that's part of what the commission does. So by identifying these areas of significance and your own individual participation, then you can help to spread the message, whatever that message is.
Yeah, and it's almost like a facilitator. A lot of different areas, especially working with the cities and the council and so forth of getting in to talk because you're dealing with seven different cities out there and the county. There's differences back and forth, but they need to touch bases to one another to facilitate that. It seemed to me that, I haven't memorized it, but the mission or the vision spoke a lot to the whole idea of bridging versus just accomplishing tasks. Absolutely.
And I think, thinking about that too, I've always, in my time here, thought about how do we elevate stories from the community? How do we kind of, as you were sort of saying, Donna, before, that personal, personal stories, personal history? So how do we not just elevate our own story, which as a body that helps facilitate, I do believe that that's really important, but how can we use that power to find and to pull and to elevate really, really important stories in the community and use those as a way to accentuate some of the issues that we're seeing in the community when we give these talks, these speeches, right?
Okay, yeah, I think that should be on the list. Oh, wait, whether it is if you're going and talking to a city council, to be able to identify those stories that are compelling enough, and maybe that's something that the COA can do, identifying those stories that are compelling enough to maybe result in a policy shift at the local level. So, did you want to say something, Donna?
Well, this strikes me from looking at this list and the conversation generally is, and as we talked about, our two most important areas that in a lot of ways is where the commission can be most effective is in conversations. And Larry's right, you have other boards and you have staff, but, so some of that can be informal, some of it formal. I mean, letters of support, proclamations are great, but it's not action, it's very passive. And I know one of the things that strikes me is one, we have some ideas about things, say on emergency preparedness, but we need to have that conversation, what are you already doing? You know, maybe some of the ideas we have are either already being implemented or they have better, more effective ideas. And I know one of the things I forgot to mention when we were talking about ourselves in the introduction is I'm also on the Board of Directors for the Humane Society. And part of our effort over, staff effort over the last year and moving to the future is not so much focusing on, okay, we're a shelter and everybody has to come to us to get an animal or service, but rather moving out into the community. And one of the areas that there's been a lot of interaction has been in homeless communities because a lot of times the reason people are living in their car or camp or whatever and don't want to move is they have an animal. They don't want the animal to be taken. The animal might be sick, they don't have the money to care for the animal. And we now have on staff somebody who's out in the community working with the homeless coordinator and the staff people, and she's there for them to call, hey, we've got this problem. We can treat the animal or arrange for treatment, you know, supplies, whatever. And in fact, one of the success stories we have is an older woman who was living in her car with her cat and she had some issues too. Long story short, she found housing in the Safe Place Community over on Fourth Lane, which is across the street from our retail shop. She is volunteering there now and hoping to move to full-time employment because she's getting retail experience. So again, it strikes me, and there was no code or no formal system, but it's the conversation and linking resources and it seems like that's where the commission can be, since we don't really have any authority or want that authority, but is to have those conversations and help make the connections with the different groups because we also don't want to set up a duplicative system. Or when, I know the orientation, one of the things about making sure accessible restroom and other facilities and housing, well, without code changes or things, talking to the people who are setting up the safe stay communities, are you thinking about these things? Because even though the primary population, what, 40 to 25, 25 to 40, there are more senior people with disabilities that also need to be served.
Well, of course. What was the one issue that I might have missed? How, I'm sure the folks who are focused towards the water, the public, how do we decide or can we reliably, I guess, decide or try to, if these things are important to the people we're serving? I mean, they're important to us in this, in this discussion. And I think generally you can take some of these things that are headline issues like housing, that's important to a whole lot of people. But there are a lot of people out there who, in the case of animals, say, you know, if you have an animal, it's your problem or whatever, whatever that happens to be. And it doesn't have to be an animal, it can be a house or, you know, so you own a house, we don't. That kind of thing. So how do you get a feeling for that, that feeling, for that response from the community, I guess, what I meant there?
The community response. Yeah, Franklin, did you want to?
Yeah, can I make a suggestion? As we get into the exercise of putting our dots up, could we combine that with the break?
That's a great idea. That's what I was thinking. Yeah, it's actually, I think that's a good question. And after we take a break and put our little, our little dots up here on the list, you're going to be in smaller groups where you can actually brainstorm ideas. So I think that's a good place to take that. And there's a lot of great ideas here. So if you want to get up and get some water, some coffee, cookies?
Before you go on, do you want us to identify where these dots come from?
Yes. Oh, I was going to ask you that. Do you want, do you want initials on where the dots come from? I mean, do you want to put your initials on the dots so that you, that you can say, gee, no? Okay. Yeah, that's like, that's an extra step. Okay. You have to remember what you want to do. Right, you might want to take some notes. So this is an opportunity, yeah, go ahead and stand up and get yourself something to drink, a cup of coffee, a cookie, and wander over here as you feel ready for that. We're about 15 minutes, we're about 15 minutes behind, which is not bad, a really good conversation. Okay. Okay. I think I turned, oh, there we go. Hello, everybody. That was a very short break. I hope you got a snack. We're going to, we're going to get into our brainstorming now. Believe it or not, we only have 48 minutes of this meeting left. So we're going to ask you to get into, into my series, Always Talking to Me. It's a little creepy. But we're going to ask you to get into the small groups for a brainstorm session. Before we do that, I'm just going to point out that Jenna and Susan will kind of compile a report on what happened today that will have feedback from where people place their dots. But we can see here that there are people who are interested in subcommittees, which is great. Presentations to county and city councils, that's one of my personal favorites, not that that matters. And then also, oh, I see a leadership summit, that there are several points there. But really, the presentations and the subcommittee work is what I'm seeing here. So you're going to move into the small groups and talk, have a brainstorm session. And Franklin and Cass are going to talk to you about what that's going to look at, look like. So, do you know where you're going? You probably don't yet. So we, we have.
I think everyone knows. We've talked to everyone individually.
Oh, okay. So if you could go to your tables, then we'll get started.
Would anyone have an issue retaining expertise?
Do we self-select what topics we want?
No, I have, I have.
I think the answer to that, Franklin, is no, we're good.
I wasn't sure every, I wasn't sure if everyone heard you because that wasn't on. But, but Ken says no. Another meeting? Gee, you are a busy man. Okay, okay. Do you want me to do your writing? Here, I don't need to be.
Thank you.
Okay, everybody, can you hear me? It's time for us to get back to the big table. Big table time. Big table time. Well, now you do. Now you're there again. Okay. So here's what we're going to do. We don't have a lot of time. And Jenna has some things to say. And Cass and Franklin have a few things to say. So what we're going to do is very quickly report back on our group accomplishments. Just because we want to make sure that we know what was happening with each of the groups. So Cass, I'm going to ask you, since Franklin's still sitting down, I'm going to ask you to start. Do you want to see our picture? No, I'll just sort of summarize because I know that we have not much time. Great conversation. That's the summary there. We listed an enormous number of community partners thinking around emergency response being the broader idea or the broader theme or topic for next year. But within that, having so many components that tie to other parts of the Aging Readiness Plan. So we really listed agencies and different, thinking about different ways that we could connect people and that we could connect ourselves with those folks. And understanding that we're not in charge of doing all of the work. There are the partners that we have to really build those partnerships so that we can very quickly reach a few people that can send the word out to many more people. Was that a good summary, group? Sort of? Good job.
Brilliant.
We had a real good group and some really great ideas. Mel came up with some. Let me just ask you, would you like to summarize for our group?
Well, what I said was we should make, identify the top issues that we feel we want to deal with. Then we need to prioritize them. Then we need to have agencies and match them up. We talked about, about making people aware of these issues. And what else was it? We've got to make it easy for public participation. That was very important. And then communication during emergencies. And we need to get into the neighborhoods and let people know. And then we need, our last point there was connect across generations.
Sounds great because we have a list of agencies. That was our brainstorm was the agencies and partnerships. So are you going to address next steps next? Or?
Jenna, are we just going to go right to the, maybe you folks telling us a little bit about what's coming up?
Yeah. Yeah, and I guess one overarching next step, both from that activity and the previous ones, is, I think Cass and Franklin mentioned this earlier. Their task is to review all of the feedback from today and try to draft, you know, get something on paper to share back with all of you to review and say, okay, does this capture what we talked about? And try to like make it into some sort of plan, right? So that'll be something that the Chair and Vice Chair will be working on, that we'll be providing support to them. And then it'll come back to you all to take a look at, see if it makes sense. If it doesn't make sense, all of that. So all of this feedback is trying to funnel into some sort of what's the work plan for this group so that we can help you achieve what you want to achieve. Okay. So, but moving on to the next agenda item on leadership roles and liaisons. So we just wanted to give you a brief intro to this topic today. And then Susan and I will follow up with an email, which also has this information in it. And it's in preparation for your next meeting in July. So the Commission's bylaws have that you all elect a Chair and a Vice Chair. Those are your two officer positions. And you elect those annually. So Cass has been serving as the Chair. Franklin has been serving as the Vice Chair. At your July meeting, that's when you'll vote for who will serve in those positions for the following year. There's some other opportunities as well for sort of extra, an extra role on the Commission if of interest. So, gosh, a number of years ago, Commission members came up with this idea of being liaisons to some other groups in the community where they thought it made sense to do that. So this is, again, this is completely optional. It's up to the group if this is something you see value in. But some of the groups where there's been people serving as liaisons recently are, so the Area Agency on Aging and Disabilities of Southwest Washington. They have an Aging and Disabilities Resource Network, also known as ADRN, that has quarterly meetings. And so we've had a Commission member attend those fairly regularly and then can share back with this group. Anything that they think is relevant to share back with this group. The Area Agency on Aging, they do also have an Advisory Council made up of community members. And while a Commission, when Commission members have been liaisons to that group, you can sit in the audience and like watch their meetings, but you wouldn't be participating in those meetings. So those are more frequent. And I think that's varied year to year on whether there's a Commission member who's been interested in attending those meetings. There's also been a Commission member serving as a liaison to Public Health. So the person last in that role, she has finished her term with the Commission, but she held monthly meetings with Public Health staff to get updates from Public Health and share what was going on with the Commission during COVID. She got the talking points from Public Health and would relay them in Commission meetings was, you know, another way to just help spread the word on what Public Health was advising community members. And then another group is Community in Motion, which is a community transportation provider. They facilitate an accessible transportation coalition. So this group has, you know, people who work for C-Trans and other people involved in transportation in the community who are very focused on accessibility. And so we have had a Commission member, and actually Mel was the alternate for that group most recently. So we've been involved with that for a couple of years. So again, that list of organizations is just what people have been doing recently. If you came up with another organization, you thought there was value in someone connecting between the Commission, you could bring it up to the group. So at your July meeting, that'll also be an opportunity to share your, if you are interested in serving as a liaison with any of those groups or another group, that's a good time to bring it up so that the group can decide who will represent them with each entity. Okay. That's my update. Like I said, we'll put it in writing, send it to you so you can think about that before the July meeting if you are interested in any of those roles.
Okay. And since I've always taken pride in us finishing on time, as existing members know, Cass always gets you on time. If nothing else, I will just quickly say this is the start of our conversation today. Thank you all very much. And you will be getting an enormous amount of information from Susan and Jenna. And also know that, collect your ideas and your stories. We're going to be talking about this for a while. So this is, this is one of the exciting parts is that as we move forward, we're doing so intentionally and strategically. And now I'm going to give it to my friend Franklin.
I just want to say thank you to everyone for your participation, for your creative ideas. We're going to need that to continue from all of you, so we really appreciate that. We've never had this much of a turnover on the Commission before. So we've got half the Commission is new. And so we're going to adopt a little different game plan. Each of the new members is going to be mentored by one of the existing members and in hopes that it'll help you to get up to speed a little quicker and you have somebody that you can work with, observe on some presentation and stuff till you get comfortable doing these things yourself. So Ken, you're going to be mentored by the Colonel. Larry?
Welcome aboard.
Yeah. Yeah. Justin, you're going to be mentored by Mel Sanchez. Donna, you're going to be mentored by our esteemed Chair. And so I'm sorry to say, Dick, but with Gail's approval, you're going to be stuck with me. So I'll be your mentor. Yeah. Okay.
Thank you so much, Donna, for, yeah, for helping to have clarity in today. Because there is a, you know, sometimes it gets a little cloudy. So thank you for working with us so graciously.
Well, thank you for the opportunity. If I only had time, I'd love to join you on the Commission, but I don't. So it's really fun to be here once a year. Thank you.
I do have to say, when I walked in and I saw the agenda there and I see Donna, 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 and I'm thinking, nobody talk to me about that.
At least it won't be Big Donna and Little Donna. So, you know, we have to worry about that. And again, let me just say thank you to Jenna and Susan for all the work they did while we were resting so this meeting could be successful. So thank you both.
So I think that's that, right? Anybody else have anything else they'd like to say? Thank you all and run out into this gorgeous day.